Come to agreement on um where you are with those standards so. So I'm number two on the first page, I think we'll come back to that, that's actually related to the the role plan development.
Yep.
Again, same with the second comment on that page, yeah, so let's come back to that. Um so other than that, it's you know, this is just sort of that laying out the structure of the regulations, there's two types of P U Vs. The review process for cottage developments, as we discussed before, site plan review and minor subdivision review. And sketch plan review would be administrative, so like there's an intent to sort of streamline review process for these. Um it would still go to the D R B for a hearing, site plan, minor subdivision combined hearing. Um if subdivision of land wasn't involved, then subdivision.
So why would um? The sketch plan be done administratively when it part of the D R B?
I, the goal there would be that to streamline review process.
So what about some of these who's coming? I don't want to wanna use the word discriminate. But if somebody's coming for a subdivision and they have to go through sketch plan. It's it's not a problem that.
If they're doing a cottage development, then they can take advantage of this, there's no discrimination, it's just a matter of whether they're doing a cottage development or not. All cottage developments are treated equally in terms of the administrative.
Cottage developments, but you're referring to any other.
Yeah, I'm just saying that usually it's part of the D R B, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it still can be.
Well, it will be, but not later.
Not for cottage developments is what I'm proposing, so the idea would be that subdivision would be.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying here. Form this, which is where.
I understand that.
Would we want to, is that a change they wanna make or um?
I don't think.
So you're saying you would, you would think it would be better to go to the D R B then?
Yeah, because at some point if they wanna break those individual laws, like we've talked before, it depends off some of the school list for that cottage development, is if you keep them all as one on the same owner? Or is it to break them down into bid law, if you broke down into bid law, why are they gonna need to put them in a subdivision? So maybe it's intent for the use, if it's gonna stay one lot. We could consider the streamlining, if they end up breaking it into. Former laws. But they own no lot, not visibility.
Yep.
For whole. And why are they any different than they don't? Do you got the?
I mean, because how is it fair, if you were stuck to buy something and you you would have to pay for a sketch plan? But somebody's doing that, doesn't have to go to sketch. I don't I don't see an equity issue here because we're talking specifically about a unique type of development. If you're not, all other subdivisions are are equal and have to go to sketch plan, but cottage cottage development is a very unique type. Of development that you're trying to sort of create a um.
And.
Streamline process or. Um it's streamlining the process is not important to you and just allowing it in your bylaws, then I would say, you know, that's fine.
Part of me. A lot of the things we've been trying to do is streamline any processes we can, I mean, I know it doesn't streamline for you necessarily.
Fuck your point, so.
For for the D R B. I mean, we we've talked, I think they slowed their their case slow slowed down, but at one point we've. We had, we're having a conversation about this and they were um. And the intention, just so everybody's fully understanding, this this. The overall intention of a sketch plan is to give their intention of project. And throw on the table essentially like this is what I'm thinking. What do you think? Let's go to the next step. Just talking out loud.
But could they change their intent later? Then it's already approved.
That's that's right where I'm headed with it. If they change.
So they tell Amy one thing, she approves it in her sketch plan review, and then you go to the D R B with something else?
Be difficult to do.
I mean, ultimately, a sketch plan review is like a preliminary, like, hey, yeah, you're you're, what you're proposing is generally in alignment with the bylaws perceived with full application.
Yes.
And I don't think it needs to be any more than that. Um for a major subdivision, it does get a, you know, there there might be a lot of like. A lot of details that are, you know, ending on. On taking that next step of investment in design. Um and it's important, you know, it's important to really like.
Get the drift.
Fleshed out and and make sure that you know the general law layout and everything, but I think this. For this type of smaller subdivision, I'm not. Happy about with it.
I'm also not as concerned about the single owner or the multiple scenario, that's where. It's a single owner doing all four. All four, and they're gonna be a battle or a family, I think. Not as as big a deal, instead of you're breaking it up into the laws.
That is a, uh, isn't that very challenging later on when it's more people wanna like. Put up fences and stuff like that, if it's not, um, you know, it'd be so many gateways in each other, I remember doing things. Cause they're individual properties, so they're already so close that they can't do a lot of things, right?
They're still, I mean, they're closer.
Because we have.
But they're not, I think that they're just a different type of unit, right? So you're not gonna have fences that separate these units.
Okay.
Like if you wanna live in a single family home with a fence, then you can like.
Buy a. I'm just thinking that property over on Swan that can't, because.
Spend my time on Swan, that's my age.
This the lot is so skinny and yet. We're having, I mean, granted, like, it's a different, like, says different family, but.
The problems are gonna come, not the first buyer, it's when they're sold down the road, and then these people, I want this.
Right. You're like, too bad. That's not how.
Because they don't know when it was designed and it was kind of special.
Yeah.
They just see it as a house on the small law.
Right.
And it's the same, Jimmy used to have the problems in my lawyers, because those are just, nobody does their due diligence when they buy something. To know what's actually there.
And realtors, realtors like to say a lot of things.
I actually think.
No, I'm not saying, Sean Sean and I have good conversations, I've been on a couple of visits with realtors that I'm like.
I deal with this stuff all the time.
Yeah. So I mean, bottom line, I think that, you know, if streamlining the review for this type of development is something that is is part of.
Uh.
Or whether minor or big, um, is for part of the goal, um, because of the type. Because of what it is, it's um, you know, it's going to facilitate a certain type of um, you know. By design, affordable housing um in your village and um create new opportunities for infill development. Um. If not, may you may you wanna have, you know, just like any other subdivision in the town, you wanna go through that same process?
So I got here late, can I just get for a second?
Yep.
When it says conducted administratively, that this means Amy's doing.
Correct.
The site plan instead of the D R B.
That's what we're doing, yeah, so.
The sketch plan.
The sketch plan, yes, which is just basically not.
This is what I'm thinking, this is what I'm thinking is, should that go forward?
A lot of times they're looking at administrative review for all minor subdivisions, now that's a decision around staff, they've been in the municipality in the past week. Um but this is uh. I mean, it doesn't necessarily make sense for the. You know, simple decisions that have, you know, just prescriptive standards in your bylaws to go through a big D R B hearing every time.
So if if they do this administratively, then the next step, they have to go before the D R B for.
It's a base. They do.
Excellent. But a part of me is thinking too, if they're gonna subdivide this all, that's a lot of engineer.
It's the concern.
A lot of engineering work. But they may be doing off of a sketch plan that Amy's done. And said, yep, kinda go for it. And then they go before the D R B and having done a bunch of work and the D R B's like.
But it's not based on the bylaws, what's gonna change?
So, yep.
It's not like the point would be to not, to make sure any decisions that are based.
These are.
To the foundation.
Are are not like um discretionary, right? So like there's no issue, Amy's not gonna be making and saying, go ahead, if like there's questionable standard, like it's it's gonna be black and white, like it meets it or it doesn't. Or else she wouldn't be able to make that decision.
I'm I'm in favor of these in general, just how do we get them?
I'm in favor of anything, I know, I'm in favor of anything that takes. Some work, A work of boards in general, because obviously we all know we've got enough to do. I know it makes more for you, but I'm also in favor of things that speeds the timelines up. Because we all know the fact could be. Just an inherent problem, not that it's anybody's fault or anything like that, it's like an inherent problem. That would be my piece, if if you guys think it should. Stay and go to the D R B, I'm on board with that, but if it's gonna speed it up, I lean towards that.
My. My thought is how many of these are actually gonna?
Probably not a whole lot.
So I mean, it it great if it gets to the point where where Amy is so busy that she can't keep up because she's getting so many of these, then.
We don't have much of a.
Yeah.
Will gladly either hire, be like a uh more hours or.
I will just, I will make the bylaws.
It's kind of like, well, it's kind of like it's good thing, like.
Well, I mean, certainly. Could we put a note in there, can be done administratively or? Under the administrative's decisions that go before a D R B, is that putting her in a sticky situation?
Oh, yeah, so.
Why did you review my?
It's just half of us, yeah, not good.
Okay. So one or the other. No, I I guess, I understand. You you looked at his, but you're making me go to the D R B.
That would be discrimination.
I would be set. I'll I'll leave it to the board to.
I'm in.
I know it may, but again, we might be looking at one or two of these in the next couple of years, few years, we're not. Um.
Sounds like you guys know more about this than I do, so I'll just go along with that.
You have questions?
I already have.
I do have more questions. Then in general, if there are other things, just another figure out some little details, right?
Okay, so the consensus on administrative review, should we bring that in for the sketch, just for the sketch plan?
I'm leaving it in.
Okay.
That's my, I agree, I'd put it to the goal if you guys wanted to, I I don't.
Make a motion to leave the um sketch plan to be conducted administratively.
Motion been made as their second.
What's second though?
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, oh, Amy, yeah.
As long as you don't make us too much fun, good.
If there was, what the situation that would be outlined in subdivision is, if there was a situation where she was not sure about whether something she passed in bylaws, that would be the situation. Or compliant with the bylaws, that would be a situation where she would have to push it to the D R B.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're typically, I think at the sketch plan level, you can say, this is questionable, it's up to you, do you wanna go in front of the D R B? Or do you wanna change it so that it can definitely be compliant in your preliminary?
Yep.
Or, you know, your applications.
And again.
We're at a sketch plan level.
Have that much knowledge properly, that this can be done.
Yeah.
That's, I was just thinking before you said it, like, how many areas is this really an option? It isn't like this is gonna.
There's a handful side.
So it's it's here.
Yeah.
Um. So. Discussion's been had, uh, all those in favor, so if I if I say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, that uh opposed, or none, motion carries, um, so we'll leave it in as administrative, perfect.
Okay, so um. Next page, um, we've got the four elements for lots of building our place, the common yard area, access areas. Uh, access and frontage, I left in um three hundred feet, minimum toward the frontage along Leasing Road.
We can't, we did the math on it and.
Maximum loads.
Yeah, we did the math on it and and the three hundred worked.
Okay, so we're just good with that, I can I can resolve that comment.
We went around on it, um, and we thought the three hundred works, if I remember right, based on.
Yeah, I don't remember there being any um.
Do we, do we?
Strong objection.
There was a reason.
The idea, the reason for the maximum was to rip, was to create this unique. In order to qualify as a cottage development and why there's these unique standards, it's to cr- it's to create this opportunity on smaller lots. If you are a bigger lot, then you should be able to comply with regular subdivision standards.
It's your corner lot, now you're in trouble.
But we did the math, we looked at it, we pulled up a bunch of corner lots and measured, and they were still. Like my big corner lot on Fourth Street was still well under the three hundred foot.
Yeah, it's a small lot, right, which this is on for.
Yeah.
But at the same time, what if somebody's got a hot paper?
Then they would work.
They're in trouble, they don't get it.
He talked about, why did we want to do that?
We'll be right out, we're just touch over the paper.
I don't know, you pulled up a few examples.
We pulled up a few examples, we've lacked through it. And realized.
We don't have a lot of.
No.
One a lot, people are done, so. Do we?
I think we measured like the Duke's Corner Lot, I thought there was a couple that we measured.
That were pop, that were.
That were what, that were under the three hundred feet.
Well under.
Yeah.
Like even um.
Like a hundred foot is, you don't see a hundred foot frontage.
Not in the village.
In the village.
Right, and that's where we we measured some and we thought that, we were trying to do that.
Still, I remember, I remember what else we looked.
You're you're not wrong, and if they bought two lots.
That's what I mean, do we do this on a different?
And we're trying to do this.
I'm thinking more, do we, we even need a number on there?
I could see.
Just just barely, not out of, I think, no.
This um.
Like I could see it.
And that was the name.
So something that had to go before, like a additional use from one of them.
There is no minimum lot coverage required for a C Ds.
Is there a minimum or a maximum lot requirement? No.
But that a corner lot, but no, 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 that's what it was, corner lot, it says any single road, so a corner lot would be two roads, meaning six hundred feet.
Fair enough.
Yep. No, that's three hundred feet on one side.
Three hundred feet, Amy.
Long as that's a single road.
Okay.
Something on the inside, it's like a hundred.
Right, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like six hundred.
Yeah, one.
So this is a road and this is a separate road, that's six hundred feet.
Long, it's not a round.
Yes. Taylor Drive.
Three hundreds of ways.
No, because it turns into La Boya.
We hundred so ways on a single road, I was thinking more.
Yep.
But no, you're right.
Yeah, along any single road.
You're there, you're the one single road.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Perfect.
Um, so no lot coverage requirement, and then number three is kind of. It's just explaining that it can be a corner lot or a lot through lot, I don't know that it's really saying anything. Cause if it deleted, if I deleted that, then. Would there be anything sit that would say that any of those situations are not allowed? I think I can delete that.
Excuse me.
I think the reason why that they, why it was brought up in in this example that I was looking at was that they wanted to make sure that. Um, they wanna encourage lots that have, you know, where there's a gridded street necklace and one might have frontage on both.
Yeah, we talked about that too.
To make sure that that's like, and people see that as an option in the design. And I think that's why it's called out, but it's not necessarily saying, like, that doesn't. Create something that.
I think it's.
Be allowed or disallowed, it's just kind of superfluous, like it doesn't really do anything other than present sort of like.
It's giving hypotheticals.
Maybe we just wanna make sure that somebody doesn't try to interpret single road as saying it can only be on a single road also, right, close to the.
Yeah, I wonder if it's just not needed, it confuses things.
Number three.
Yes.
Or or if we're gonna remove number three. Maybe a little better. Discretional number one one, so that nobody interprets this as saying, well, it can only be a single. Right, that's why your your purpose for.
So just say maximum total road frontage. Um. Uh, no, um.
Think you delete three and just take a lot of the words out to make it less confusing.
The lot can. A lot can have frontage on multiple roads, as long as the maximum total road frontage on any single road is not more than three hundred feet. Does that make sense?
That's that's what I think we're looking to achieve, right? And I think that combines the two of those.
That's supposed. C Ds may front on.
That's what we're talking about.
Roads. And just put that in front of the top one.
Yeah, C Ds may front on one or one or more, I would say, could be three.
One or more.
It could be.
We can probably combine those two, or at least they should be next to each other.
Yeah. Um. Multiple. Roads. Okay.
Um. C Ds may be accessed by driveways or private roads, where the C D access is exempt from the road standards in section eight point eight. All access is shall comply with the driveway standards in section three point two, regardless of the number of units or lots being accessed.
So somewhere in there, should we add that there's no possibility that the town will take over these?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, the test.
For down, but. I agree not to immediately say that you agree.
My only concern is when you add that many units, it's gonna have to have a street name.
That's.
No, I'm just saying to add something in there so that people will understand that it says that they, the town, they'll never file this road because.
Yeah.
It like we're basically telling you don't have to take over it.
It may have a street name, but can never be a town road.
Like it not, there's quite a few places that are, I mean, all the places that they're having issues with roads right now have streets.
It would be as simple as all of the else with the new thing, but rather.
Yeah.
Uh, not private, we're all new, it would be a private.
Just say privately maintained.
Privately maintained, yeah, privately maintained.
There you go. In perpetuity.
All roads are.
The reason you don't want it to be a road is because you don't want it to be that wide.
Right, they may, they might have.
We're trying to say we don't want roads, it's like driveway standard, highways.
Right, but what we don't wanna do is push i- into a road standard because they're not gonna be long. To save like.
Private, we say private.
I think they're a pretty probably, then I don't want to like, let's be, and determine it not being called a road and it being like some place.
No. If if it has three addresses, it has to be a road.
It has to be road, it can be a name or like.
Has to have a name.
No, it.
Uh, it can be anything, it just has to have something.
It's not, but my question is, is how do you have it follow driveway standards when the first number one is not more than two lots? So it's already not.
It's, I think it's more talking to surface standards, like the width, the material used. Right, is that what you're saying?
Well, we might have to then change the driveway standards to say.
Well, I guess what I was trying to say is C Ds, so it's either a driveway or a private road. But if it's a private road, it'd be based on the number of lots, that's how you define it. But if it's a private road, it's exempt from the road standards and shall comply with the driveway standards, so.
Yeah.
So should, could we just say it's standard in there instead of that?
You know, it's a, it's a.
But then all the other developments that are private roads, they're making them to that standard.
But they're not a cottage quarter.
Okay.
They they, if it's a private road, it's, the chances are, it's like.
So my question is to make that less confusing, should it just say, instead of saying road standards, section eight point eight, should it just say must meet? Um, whatever, what'd you say, B seventy one for driveway standards?
B seventy one A.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of other standards in the driveway standards section that I thought would be good. It's the only one that wouldn't apply is the two lots, the number of lots accessed.
So it has to change that.
I don't think you'd have to change that, I just like don't think you're, I'm basically saying like. Regardless of, I mean, maybe we need to just specifically say regardless of the number of units. Accessors.
This will adhere to our driveway standards, period.
I don't, that a cloud is part of that. It would have to.
They're from.
I'm saying that five hundred the rules is the cloud has to be able to turn around.
No, it's not really by by the count, no.
But the driveway is privately filed.
Saying for the village to take over it.
They, yeah, they will, they will ever be able to.
They won't, they won't take it over if they have to.
Never, maybe that's our goal is that they can, yeah, they can't take it over anyways because we're not building a base.
I think it wouldn't be able to anyways, but.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Right, so it may not be necessary for that.
Well, with.
No, it would be necessary.
Twenty years down the road when people come back in and.
We're gonna have.
We're gonna have a driver, I mean.
Truck start playing.
People are hosting, so.
What's that?
Will the fire trucks be able to access it?
Yes, because I think that's.
It's under five hundred feet.
The lots are so small that it's not like, yeah, so.
We weren't, we were, we, Leonard, this is something we talked about last time, I. Essentially, anywhere we're gonna be doing this, a fire truck can pull up on the main road and they can drive those.
Have a car.
They don't necessarily have to, the reason we have the driveway and.
It's private.
Drive road standards over the seven hundred fifty feet or whatever it is, is because they can't back a fire truck that far to get to the house or pull that much hose to get to the house, like. Think of this, like, think of a house in the middle of the park being on fire. It don't, it doesn't matter that there's not a driveway to the house in the middle of the park, they can.
You said it's on fire. Swan's house is on fire.
Yeah, Swan, ima- imagine, it doesn't matter, it doesn't, no, it doesn't matter that Swan's house is on fire because a fire truck can pull up on any side and get a hose to it fairly recently. If that makes sense. Sorry.
Oh, I should say, I already said regardless of the number of units or lots being accessed.
Okay, yeah, we we talked about this last time.
But like, so by having the sentence regardless of the number of units or lots being accessed.
We don't need to.
I'm I'm trying to speak to the fact that while the driveway standards say typically they would only apply at more than two lots. In this case, C Ds are subject to those standards regardless of lots.
That makes sense to me.
Um, and then parking areas shall be shared and not a. And not laid out separately on each lot.
Um.
For each unit.
Um, should that be maybe shared and do not need to be laid out separately? Because the way I would read this is. You couldn't make them separate, but let's say, for example, they wanted to. Does that make sense?
It's too pretty, because the point is.
It's a cottage development, that doesn't make sense to us, it's not really the intent of the design.
Is it gonna be all, it will, I feel like it should have nothing to do with each.
I agree.
I could miss you.
But you can't do that because there's the limit of one and a half spaces per unit.
Yeah, but you have, you have, you have guest spaces.
So how can, how can you?
Yeah, but one and a half, how how do you label one and a half space?
Yeah.
Then you, you don't, you just buy the total.
Right, buy, and it's by number.
Sometimes, sometimes the problem you're gonna run into is if you say, like, lot one has parking space one. Lot two has parking space two, and they share three is.
All of three visitors.
I think you're gonna, yeah, but if someone, you know, lot one has someone visiting, then lot two has someone coming over, and they're like, well, like, that's our spot too, like, and then there's nobody.
So it's a, and and what it was, you had your own spot.
Yeah.
And then there were guest spots, and you shared them.
House.
And that is how you keep everybody happy, because the main driver.
Well, I think it's.
Take the one spot.
That's, that's.
And then it's flexible about everything else.
What about the other thing with, you know?
They couldn't do that, though.
Cause it, well, will this help with like, um.
But, but is that.
Like, well, more of association stuff, do if they all scare.
Well. A little one, but then there's a community one, so we're like the alley drive setup, it's not the arch setup. This is the kind of scenario I can see happening. Where we use that statement. That we would no longer be able to do, this is not an option, it would have to be a community parking spot there with that statement on the bottom.
But how do they handle like snow rule and stuff if you own your?
Well, if anybody has their own number, then you know who's gonna rock, who's.
No, but as far as paying for like, so, cause private, that's.
No, like, no, that's totally wouldn't, wouldn't be a problem.
Part of your H ways.
Probably H ways, that's how that's all. The driveway, the road, it's all in H ways.
I guess I've, the only H ways I've seen, like, they plow like the road, but like, if you have like a short driveway, they don't plow it.
No, not not these, like alley drive, they don't pay for trash, I don't think, the trash is all done for them. The plowing's all done for them, and the mowing's all done for them. That's all for the.
Saturday, so I'm in there.
Yep. Um.
So one of the things.
I think we're overthinking it, not just listening to someone.
Yeah, not that.
Oh, bro, obvious, bro.
Right. Um, is it our job, but at the same time, isn't it our job to keep the neighbors happy? This that seems like, like not to be whatever, but it seems like a lot of our job is keeping everybody getting along nicely.
It is, no, that's my job.
And it seems, well, kind of like cottage events have to be this far, and it's because, well, the neighbors like it, well, there's maybe there's less arguments when it's the way that we. That goes.
You mean, you.
No, I, I mean, I just, I'm fine with deleting number five, as long as if they can do individual parking and still meet all of the section standards in building in section D.
Just wondering.
I would say just say. Parking may be common or individualized.
I don't even think that's a.
See, if they, I'd say, I'm not.
Yeah, I think by that was the way.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Cause that is the way Chandra.
Except, I mean, if this is the street, where's the common yard area and how does it meet all the standards?
It's gotta meet it, right, it gotta be, so, you know, that's for both.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But it can change.
Um, so setbacks, um, so what I found out, so what I ended up landing on is that unless the town has adopted its own building code and. P A for all lot, it doesn't come into a bet in play until you're doing over four units. So, um, in a building.
Because each building is single rated.
Cause that's a state building. So, well, so what I did was, cause you can potentially in like you're leaving flexibility to potentially create a unit up to six units. So what I just said for minimum setback between buildings is five feet unless otherwise required by NFPA state or local building codes.
Um.
And then so then like if the if it was a multi unit structure between four and six, they had to get fire code or a permit from the state for building code.
Yep.
And it required more than that, then they would have to do more than that. But the minimum from your bylaws perspective would be five feet, if you make and that again, that's on minimum, so you know.
Because these are private.
I'm saying I wanna have fifteen feet between.
So because these are single family and similarly owned.
They can.
They can be, but the the majority of them maybe are single family and would be individually owned, they wouldn't be governed by under fireworks.
Right, which is what I
I could see.
where I landed with this.
About first one rooms for apartments, I see.
Meaning there's, but I'm what I'm saying is if if they're to be individually owned and not governed by fire marshal there would be no inspection to for anybody to know that these can or can't be so close.
Mm-hmm.
Per NFPA. What she's referring to. But I should have I didn't do this and I know I said I would, I gotta.
Well, I don't think the NFPA, wait, where I mandated is NFPA is not, these units are not subject to NFPA unless they're a multi unit structure with more than four units.
Yeah.
So that's if they're not subject to NFPA, then why would you regulate me?
Correct, but we should.
For NFPA.
True. Are we opening up the town to liability for allowing put them too close, if there's fire?
I don't think so.
Well.
If you wanna move it to ten feet, I'm fine.
Is the builder gonna be held accountable for that though?
That's what I'm
But it's not. It's different if we're doing it as our own apartment residence, but what about when a contractor does it?
They'll definitely have to fire rate it while essentially.
And so with our duplex, we were looking at putting a unit on and I believe I needed anything under ten feet, I had to fire rate the wall between. What we're gonna do is what we were gonna do was put a um breeze way and then put another building because of the roof lines anyways. And if it was less than ten feet, the both walls need to be fire rated.
Wow.
So this I think would get us by that, but let me have a um, let me send fire marshal. Fuck the dentist.
That's that's a big one, cause I could see if it was being done by owners that's different, but it's like if the builder does it. The owner, the bad like. We say there's no clause for single family.
So you think it should be ten feet if they.
The builder has to follow that, the builder.
Well, it could be. Let me let me pause there.
Just because you, not because there would be any regulation that would require them to be so, but because you think it would be good. Cause I.
If there was a.
Good practice or a.
And then, because here's what's going on right now, I know, like I've been seeing it. People are getting fraudulent RBS, RBEs residential to building energy code forms supposedly. Buying houses two houses later and are trying to go after the builder from being the second, third owner of that home. And they're going after the builder because they're saying they didn't get enough insulation in the attic. So I could see someone doing that with this, where, oh, you built these houses ten feet apart while the fire code says they should be fifteen feet apart. And then people are so happy today, like.
Oh, yeah. But the two, but I don't know what these, I mean, I mean, it's it's worth it, okay, yeah, it's worth it right now, um.
Well.
I'm not sure that there's any liability if it's not subject to, there's no building code
There's no.
in the law unless. Or it's a.
It's probably there.
Yeah.
Um, but if if you know, I think that's fine, if the town of Swanton wants to write their bylaw that it considers the building code, the national code, then that's that's the town's prerogative to do so.
But is that safe if one catches fire and five feet beside it, like?
Quite frankly.
That's like a little bit dangerous.
Safe table.
The difference between five feet and ten feet when a house catches on fire is probably not.
Well, but if the setback but the side setback is five feet, meaning five feet for this house, five feet for that house, which is ten feet total.
Ten.
Which I think is
I mean, also think of a townhouse, right, I mean, these are, I mean, this is just a different design of a townhouse, there just happens to be a little bit of separation between.
Beats.
They wanna fire rate that home, they wanna have a fire rate with a lot of fire rated walls.
Sure. I know, we built our new garage, we had to build a fire rated wall to separate.
That's a whole nother, or that's a no.
All the sheet rock and obviously like what we're going to do.
And then.
It's cool.
Uh, well, there should be a firewall in the attic though. You should have a fire, that's a whole nother.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just.
No, it says minimum setback, oh, between buildings.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah.
So it's ten feet there.
Well.
Minimum.
But this says minimum building setback from side and rear, oh, exterior.
Are we able to say that it needs to be a fire?
No, that would be, let me let me see what that says.
But it's um, feeling is to contradict each other.
There's that, there's.
No, 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 we, no, we don't have an inspector, we don't have, no.
Okay. Okay. You're right.
We're we're not heading that narrow.
So in this case here, as you will say, all of us did that, and they're feeling one and three are contradicting each other. One says the minimum setback from side rear exterior lot lines is five feet.
That means.
But number three says that the buildings must be five feet apart.
Exterior of the cottage development.
Okay.
You have each other. That's like them talking to each other.
So these can, here it can be close.
So it's it's the lot line as a development, not the lot line between building.
But but here it can't be close. Oh, oh shit. Should have sent that. He he's gonna ask some questions about it, I won't have it soon. I'm sure you must find that's.
Where? Let's check what's back there.
Ten.
Fair enough. Let's wait.
Well, if you if we switch uh, if we switched it to ten for number three um, maybe that's I'm fine with that. I was just trying to push the boundaries and being plausible for lot design while still understanding that um, for multi unit structures that are subject to the code that that even there may be a stronger standard for fire.
When we think about these, they're they're not similar. There's nobody that's gonna build all four, I can't put them all four.
They are gonna be though, this this exact lot is gonna be.
How can I live on all four though?
They don't.
They're.
Individually owned now.
Right, they're gonna be individually owned, but you think each person is doing the individually owned build their own?
No, it's.
They're only the individually owned and built.
By by, well, habitat could be a builder developer. They need to follow the fire marshal code, so at that point, because the contractors have their their standard and they're not building it themselves. We like to do whatever we want for ourselves, right? But you Ross the boy build a house for me. Then unless I'm the G C, when Ross the boy is the G C, we hold it a standard.
Not not like.
Not around several lots.
There's no state building code.
No. No, but.
If it's mine, I can do whatever I want.
Yeah, but these are, these are, these are single family residences.
Respect that.
You could build these.
If they're individually owned, they're not.
But you're saying it's.
So if they're not necessarily, they could be rentals, all four of them, they're rentals.
Rentals. Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
All four could be rentals.
You're right.
Unless it's in the.
No, he's right, so so it should be governed by state fair.
It wouldn't, they wouldn't, they're under no situation with these such, unless it was one building, if you're.
Did you say it?
Yeah, but like he said though, if one person builds this whole budget.
Well.
But I have to say it can.
And owns all of them, but as soon as you exchange money
And that and that owns that's in that.
or housing, whether it's single family or multiple families now, as soon as money is exchanged, it goes into fire. Whether it's a multiple ha- people in one house, like we we own a single wide trailer, technically that is under fire marshals purview because money is exchanged for them to live there.
Yeah. We do.
Doesn't matter if it's multiple families or not.
So if they sell them, if they sell them like the project gets proposed, they wouldn't.
That's that is new as of.
But if the if a developer wanted to build this as as rentals.
As rent everyone. If Sean built this on ten individual lots with ten individual same family homes, but Sean owned one of those homes himself and rented it to someone, it would be under fire marshal purview. That's new as of within like five years.
Fire marshal per purview, not per building standards. It would have already been built.
Yeah, but because you're not.
I'm sorry, if the purview came into play.
If he's building it all though.
I think that makes sense.
But it's being rented, it has to follow rules.
So.
So what if you don't know that it's gonna be rented until later?
That's.
Can't rent it later.
They.
Need to be.
Wow.
Can you put it in the in the rules that we can't rent it at all?
They would have to bring that code. To try and rent it.
It's not very.
So correct. It wasn't.
It's a.
By the age of when it's built, like for instance you take anything prior to nineteen ninety four
Not anymore.
and you can have just battery backup smokes in it, you take ninety four to twenty sixteen, that's the hardware for battery backup, twenty sixteen.
Is this different if it's owner occupied?
The whole owner occupied thing went out the window too.
Yeah, this is all, this is for rentals, so these are specifically for rental property.
Even a duplex.
And it's all the age of when it's built, which is where I'm headed with this. When was it built? So the fire marshal's gonna say if this doesn't follow the fire codes at the time of construction which we don't have the answers to right now.
My understanding was that fire code did not apply to anything for one to three units.
Oh, God, no. All in all, I can't build a three unit apartment building right now, not put fire in the walls and I have to.
A duplex.
But it's.
Even a owner occupied duplex now.
Two.
But that's a pure landmark, if you never rent it out to somebody, it should be a private business.
Yes, these.
But I'm talking about multi unit.
Two or more.
If you sell them, you're fine, but if you
I can't go both of the questions today.
if one person built them and kept them and then rented them instead of selling them, then that's where your problem is.
Yeah.
So like the project has proposed, it's not a problem because they're gonna be individually sold.
So if.
But if a developer saw this and thought it was a good idea and said I'm gonna build six units and then use the rentals instead of selling them he could do that.
Well, you could, you just would run the risk of potentially having, now, there's plenty of rentals out there that aren't under aren't being inspected, aren't being gone through, they they aren't pushing at this point like, but but technically technically they could be doing inspections in single family rentals.
And they have something.
Yeah.
They did on our, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can do it anytime they want.
Yeah.
At any given time, any rental property of any sort.
So you move out of your house and.
It's it's chopped into three?
No, you move out of your house and buy a new house and just rent your house the way it is.
Oh, yeah.
It immediately goes into should be.
So you're thinking if Sean bought a triplex, but he took his children and the other two, and like they wanted them, but we need a fire code, so it's the owner.
They pay him, yeah, they pay him.
There's our difference.
Cause they pay him.
And we wanted to give him both types of insurance.
Yeah.
I don't wanna like this little spot.
They're paying.
Sean bought a triplex in Florida and moved his kitchen to it, I already got one we stayed in for months.
We have, I think duplex more, David.
Even if it's owner on on site.
I mean, if it's owner on site.
Yes.
So for an accessory dwelling.
If there's money exchanged.
A B U is different. Than the duplex.
But money exchange or.
Mmm.
It's money exchange.
I think.
Do you let someone live in your house?
The A B R is come under.
Doesn't because it's not, the whole thing is that they're trying to keep rent rental houses more safe.
Yes.
I think A B U's come under a fire marshal.
Well. Well, I'm sorry that you were told right in this meeting, if there was an understanding, I will have.
No, we're just.
Ross will hash it out, the fires.
And it may be.
I'll hook up the desk for you.
And it may be fine, five feet may be acceptable in our house.
Maybe ten feet, I think it was ten foot more.
Seems like it's be fire rated, I mean, that's the problem, sit on a building inspector, I'm gonna call one.
The fire code applies, then they can come in and they have to you're saying that any rental unit needs to get a a state permit?
Yeah, not a permit, it's just inspection, it means an inspection.
Needs to comply. It needs to comply to the expectation that we have as
Right, it's.
yes, to the safety.
So the permit is required for the.
Well.
But. You know, so it's a.
No, like, probably it's just like a sign.
It's gonna be issue.
If these.
Fire marshal has to sign on.
So like, like for example uh, your front porch, you don't need, you can have a front porch with no handrails on your house. You go and rent that house, single family, fire marshals come do their inspection, they're gonna tell you, you need a handrail, it needs to be this, it needs to be that.
There is this fire. Got it, got it, got it.
Yeah.
Or the forensics.
Um. But in your own personal house, so these can be built this way.
You anticipate people right in your mouth?
I think so, I'm a bit careful.
It's a very.
You're not, yeah, strict rental or homeownership, it's it can't restrict it. No. It can just say no.
But it doesn't mean that they don't.
The fire code statement. So let's say these as is, well, it's a local in ten years, fire marshal comes in and says no. And that's that.
And that's on the old.
So so I'm just saying, what if we take, what if we just take out this section about fire code?
And that's on the. They. They'll find out. They try to do it and they will be.
And they have to
they're not looking down on that.
The utility rate. Because these to make sure that um, well, I mean, I still think you could um, qualify that um
Is that a priority to us?
That the setback is that that may need to be increased if it's required by the state building code. I think.
Should we just say they must increase?
They must be more involved, right?
Or or.
I don't, but I also think we need to be careful about what you're regulating, you don't want to get into the business of regulating the state fire code. So we wanna
What we.
examine.
Maybe you're looking at general statement, like put a general statement on this, I just need to follow it.
No, not that you comply with it, to sit, but basically to note that it may require stricter stand uh, setbacks.
Because these buildings can be.
Depending on how.
I I actually see this as more popular for renting than I do for single homeownership.
So so those homes can be closed as long as those walls are fire rated.
Right, which is why maybe.
So in the grand scheme of ability, a house costs that cost.
It the setback feels right for the term minimum setback, feel the right way to design and then say.
And stay.
For at one wall that's fire rated.
You need to go to fire. All of them to the minimum, the just the walls, of course.
Same.
Is a state building permit maybe require, maybe may require for anything.
I mean, where's the walls, of course, have to be, I'm not opposing.
Ah. No, you're not gonna say that when it's required, you're gonna say it may be required and they
Double.
Yeah.
require more stringent standards.
Because I know here, for example habitat, if habitat goes in and builds these they're probably going to have inspections. Which would get triggered. But if Joe Lo builder builds this and has never been in the realm of the like commercial world, multifamily he may not make that call. And may realize down the road that there's an issue.
I think you're safe on saying unless otherwise required by state or local building codes. Or however to reference that, to make sure we're referencing the state fire code that may be required.
Yeah.
Um, you're gonna set a comfortable minimum standard but that is a minimum standard for your rental bylaws, if a state permit or inspections were required that the dis- the builder may have to.
Yeah, I like what you're having there, you know, that it's this, unless it's required.
By the state.
That have a statement on there to make sure that that person goes and checks, right, like hey
Right.
we prompted you to. I don't care.
Well, yeah, but it mean they're going to.
Well, should we, should we make it? So they add. Do you want to provide a letter?
If we want.
The other thing is, do you feel more comfortable with ten feet? Um.
I I'm fine with.
Or do you do you do you.
Ten total.
Ten.
It, no, it should be ten between buildings.
Okay.
I think it should be ten between buildings, I think that's.
So five for the perimeter is fine as a minimum, because you're gonna have a setback on the other side.
Yes.
And what's the.
And.
Isn't it?
Well, in the in the village, it would be fifteen would be your smallest one.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be even smaller than.
So it'd be.
Do you wanna do ten and ten?
Between buildings?
Ten between buildings and ten around the exterior.
Yeah.
Is a problem.
Yes.
Isn't the spirit of this.
No, we're the models from where we go.
For people to own their own homes and the four will be.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
An ownership, I thought that was.
It is for the one that's proposed.
I thought that's how it's proposed to us.
The one that's proposed, but it's not say another person couldn't take this and do.
That's that, so we're we're talking about uh, opening up a two piece of more rentals.
I like.
Well, the thing that you can see is, is you could see is some developer buying one of these large old homes in the village, a corner lot tearing it down and putting two or three in the same footprint.
Or.
And putting.
Yeah.
Or on your own, but even larger, but you know.
Yeah, yeah.
With now with the the law coverage right, yes, all the work you guys did on that Boston. The city law coverage, we do these.
Right, so we're changing it to ten, so ten around the exterior, ten between buildings
Yeah.
and we're saying unless otherwise required by state or local building codes, I wanna um, potentially reference exactly what the name of.
Oh.
It's.
Let me have a, uh, I'm sure, I'm shocked with Dennis doesn't. Um, this is usually. Um, cause he's usually good. I'll have a conversation with him and then at some point. Loop you in with whoever we gotta talk to again, he he'll say, you should really talk to so and so at fire marshal's office, he'll hear this. Um, but he's usually a good guy to count point the end.
Okay. Um, okay, so building standards, um. Each principal building may be located on an individual building lot. Alternatively, the C D may be configured so that more than one principal building. Is located on a single lot.
Yep.
There shall be at least two principal buildings in the C D.
Right.
Buildings may include one or more dwellings and be detached or attached, the maximum number of units in one building is six units, large multi-unit dwellings are located in.
Why did we go with six, I'm just.
I went with six because I thought maybe I should have double checked this on your bylaws, I thought that was a cutoff between like small multi and large.
You know. I get it.
Um, but I also think the the idea is that you're not trying to create big.
No.
Structures. So six seems like, I mean, it's pushing it, maybe it should be four.
Big structures. Uh, that's, I think, I think it should be four. That's what I was thinking it might have. Multi family. Sixty. Five and in here, we had a conversation about multi.
Where did I see them?
As we change the verbiage, didn't we get away from, oh, right here, dwelling dwelling and dwelling multi-family, the building portion there of a three or more dwelling.
Alright, so let's make, let's make it four, I think four is a minimal. And I don't need to say.
Because we have dwelling unit. They have two families dwelling.
With single family duplex.
Multi is over three. Single, we kind of duplex. Uh, we called it two, no, we called it two family dwelling.
They've changed everything from dwell from unit to dwelling, that's.
Apologies, you know what, I was thinking that you have large stuff were differentiated with the large, no, they need to be complete the last sentence. And is everyone comfortable in. Uh, limiting that for you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, each dwelling shall have a minimum two hundred square foot credit outdoor area. Multi unit dwellings may provide shared space, shared or individual, both storage must be fitted in the site design, examples include, where limited to a building or buildings with storage units like fridges or individual garbage sheds for each unit. No driveway shall orient a rear wall towards the common yard area or any road, no driveway shall be located between a dwelling and the common yard area. No res- our residential and residential accessory uses, including home occupations may be permitted in a project. For martial uses of.
Would there be parking for home occupation?
Doesn't change.
Oh, yeah.
Home occupation. It could be a hair salon. Be a chair, mirror.
You have to walk.
Yeah.
Those, those people.
There's guests.
So like the common yard area would have to be here in your situation.
Alright, Oliver, you're in charge.
Well, do we wanna talk about the storage thing briefly?
I, that was, that was kind of my thing.
I think, I don't think it's too restrictive because it says you can, if they just put a garage, you.
Where was the storage thing?
So Ross, do you wanna do this edits in January then?
Yeah. I don't think when we put this forward.
So, and let me just highlight some of the plan, rural plan development, so. The reason why I propose this is right now, I don't really see a whole lot of difference between your planning and development and your subdivision standards. You don't require, other than it just like sort of grants this like open ended delivery for your subdivision review, you're not requiring open space. Um, and it's just. I think that. You know. I don't know, like when you have projects that come through as P U Ds, I'm not really sure like. What, like why are they a P U D, what are they doing that is making them a P U D, like what are. Standards allowing for or creating. Other than regular subdivision where you develop.
They small. This second officer do fleet.
That's.
Too big.
They're.
They're, you know.
Small.
Yeah, they're smaller. Never had one.
I feel like that would be a good conversation to have with D R B.
Yeah.
I agree, we need to have anyone that is.
So they put the like proposing some new.
We can. Yeah.
Slideboard.
Some new standards for our the the unit development and the only, one of the main differences, it allows for, um. There's some specific um dimensional standards that would apply, but you have to. Um. Set aside some super center a lot, but what was appropriate, fifty percent, sixty percent. Um. Which is currently not required, otherwise do a standard.
Right. What, and we're setting. And we're setting the land aside because we're giving them smaller lots?
And I think the other.
Space fifty.
The other intent is that like in some cases municipalities are using planning unit development or potentially requiring planning unit development with this set aside as a way of limiting density and. It's sort of. Controlling the rural landscape in terms of like how much development happen there.
But us and the the only thing I'll say with that is.
You don't say that?
No.
And.
Keep people in the building.
Because we're fifty.
Ruining our.
Yeah, but also don't forget, don't forget Oliver, we're fifty percent, we're fifty percent conserved already, so we're running out of space.
Or question of our fifty percent conserve is a freaking.
Right.
Wetland that you couldn't have built on anyways, cause the refuge.
You're, you're not wrong, but if you take out all the other like. Legitimate places we can expand, there's, there's not a whole heck of a lot out there.
I think this would. This would be really daunting.
Don't get me started on.
Oh, we already sold that in the state of the army that doesn't pay any taxes.
The other case would be sort of beside in conjunction.
Um.
That's.
Well, no, it's not developing. That would be.
True. A good percentage.
Usually we're.
So I feel like there are a lot to talk about there.
Yes.
Um. This. This isn't really. Anything new other than I took out the deleted language to the good source like read it, I guess maybe take one and that's it. Um, you looked at it last time, I just. Didn't know we were gonna update it again, the next step really, the main outlier here is I feel like. The main question here is the rural plan development, whether we wanna don't connect with that, so whether it means that some half person is out again or. Other spell, otherwise you're already to integrate.
Um. I gotta guess I got a better underst. The rural plan development.
Sure, when you get home and think about it.
That's the problem I will.
Yeah.
So I don't think.
Um, the other thing is, please slide in some.
Sidewalks?
No, some, uh. Updated. Uh, flood hazard and river quarter. Standards based on the state model that would be compliant with the N F I P and the state per quarter.
Didn't we talk about that?
Don't we have any houses in that anymore?
Table for loans, you still have to have standard, you still have the bylaws.
Well, we don't need, we don't need standards right now?
They, there, there might be tweaks here and there that you need to make, but we recommend just adopting the state's model. Um, and then we can sh- ensure that it is compliant and you don't have river quarter. And if you do river quarter, they're gonna have the recorder or bylaws at the state level in two thousand and twenty eight. Um, but in the meantime, you get a better draft, um reimbursement rate from the state. For um damage um to roads and emergencies.
If we have this.
If you have a border. I will pass this out to you, this is, um, an example that we, it's, it's for Fairfield, but we know that it's compliant and it's based on the model and so it's not. It would basically, we could basically take Fairfield out, let's walk in and we're doing this all over towns.
And this is.
Um.
Some of them are coming down, but nobody changes in this.
Are we just spending a lot of time on these?
No, but this is, this would, you would be taking out your existing flood hazard regulations and putting that in, and this includes the definitions. The the specific N F I P definitions.
So this is boiler.
This is boilerplate that we've adopt adapted, so the boilerplate to me doesn't work well with the way our bylaws are structured, so we took the boilerplate. And made it into something that works well with most, most of our community's bylaws, it's been reviewed by federal. Um, and state as compliant. So I'm recommending that the town. You know. Uh, integrate this into their bylaws, and so your section on flood is. You just, I just.
You didn't know that's the name?
What is it?
You, you deal with some flood stuff, that's why I'm looking at you.
Basically, I would, I would like, so the state isn't adopting that, so we can't just say, see this page?
State did not.
No, can't say in the.
So they approved it.
See this?
No. Like.
You know, you that to be.
That would save us the papers.
For the flood hazard area, each, the town is a member. And then, um. And you need to have flood hazard bylaws.
Right.
And it's, and you know, it's required, you know, in order for properties in the flood plain to get flooded.
You're good.
Um.
Could you?
Well.
Like a quick, don't go crazy, but. Can you just compare that and give us some points of like. Major change, does that makes? I mean, we try. It's happened in the past where someone's been like, we gotta do this and we go ahead and do it and then realize that it makes some major stuff down the road, does that make sense, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Can.
Yeah.
I'm open to it, like if, if it's not like.
The river quarter is gonna be new. I've reviewed it, so you can ask.
Well.
It will.
Um.
Just not reading it, you have to be a scientist to understand that those words are.
Not for farmers.
But you, that's part of the, the bylaw, there's.
I think, I think.
There's not gonna be a whole lot new.
Okay, but it's the core of the river.
River quarter is gonna be different. That's coming down with our final.
So if you can just give us a high point of the part notes.
What it means.
Are you sweating?
And you guys, people, I'm not, I just, I was supposed to leave fifteen minutes ago, um. You, my wife knows that. It can be plus or minus three minutes or three hours, so. Um. Next meeting, I see, we need that scheduled.
We got the. Yeah.
We made that schedule, so we already, did you schedule thirteen?
Actually, you help that too.
Yes.
Oh, she, oh, you're not telling.
So do you not have one of those, because I gave you one. There's a few of both of all the future dates, I think.
We got.
The last. No, because you may or may not get a reminder because.
Yeah, it's my.
I don't feel the need, we're all adults here.
Oh, it's.
You need to know.
It was in my schedule.
So my show.
Tuesday, January thirteenth. I didn't know. And we, did we schedule that meeting?
Yeah, right now.
It's the second thing, what we're ready to communicate to or on.
I'm.
You may or.
Okay, I'm.
Do the second two.
I agree.
Start out it.
So the bylaw changes, we'll do it at the next meeting.
Yep.
But I think we need to schedule a meeting for No joke real with the select board and. D R B to figure out. Or sorry, that's. The last year it's been awful, but we spent so much money and time making bylaws and then the. So we're only.
You're not really understanding why you say that.
Cause like that development on Route seven with the house, like. We make the, we did so much work to make things black and white. And then someone literally builds a house too close to the boundary and they agree. They allow them to do it. The problem, the problem, the problem isn't, the problem isn't the people that build it now, it's just like the other development off of Route seven.
No, if you are, if you are.
Where someone says, oh, you're off.
Lots of variances.
There's no variances anymore, we got rid of them.
We, we did away with variances in the last month, we did.
That's our.
They're ending them out.
But essentially, we did away with thirty percent rule.
Okay.
Right. That's not.
I, it's not, doesn't even matter, the problem is someone built a house before they had a permit. Didn't follow the rules. And then came back in and got a permit. And it never should have happened, they had, should have had to remove that just solely based on the fact that they did it without a permit. You can't do something without a permit that doesn't follow the rules and then come in and say. Oh, I didn't know I needed a permit, like everybody knows you need a permit to build a house.
We never said he didn't need a permit.
Regardless, there's multiple issues that we have. And it's the same issue we had last year on Woods Hill. Where we brought up the driveway issue and then it was, well, we don't wanna start selective. Enforced, no, we just need to enforce everything.
I'm gonna need a great one in respect.
It doesn't.
No, 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 I need to start that issue.
It's just, it's just.
And then, so the other, the other, there's another one I have, our neighbor. Something I didn't sold land with a twenty five foot right away. Well, our land is here, there's another land is here, that neighbor, he sold this section and kept this section, he gave a twenty five foot right away. There's only fourteen feet between these two corners. So what good is it to have a twenty five foot right away? When you don't have a twenty five foot right away. So someday someone's gonna try and build out there and get pissed off because they say, well, I have a twenty five foot right away. When you measure from pin to pin, it's fourteen feet. It's just, to me, I think, I mean, the select board guys doesn't have to be involved, but at least with the.
Well, they do, because they're the ones that are.
It needs to be figured out because the town spent like. Way too much money, Eric Corey. To rewrite this and our goal was to make it easier.
And to not get any variances.
To just not. All of anything that's just.
Then you shouldn't have it in the book.
But that whole thing, there was never applied for variance, it was just applied for a permit. And then it came from the minutes, like I said, I'd go to the meetings. The minutes it came in and said, well, I talked to the neighbor and he's okay with it, which might be okay now.
The application was for a variance.
He didn't, right, the application was for variance, it wasn't a permit thing.
So why was it rejected the first time? Standard, I understand that, but if it was just for a variance, it should have been understood that, like you don't apply for variance if you meet standards. And I thought, I guess I'd have to re closer to, I was under the understanding that there is no more.
That was our intention was to do away.
But it's still on the book.
It's in.
We usually take it down. Next, because we, we shrunk everybody's.
That, what's.
Variance.
Variance.
We shrunk all of the setbacks.
Variance is our statute. So you can't keep it moving.
Well, we can get rid of it down to a certain amount, which is what we intended to do.
So we've been.
What, what do you mean by?
We, we took, we, so we used to just give everybody a variance, if you came in and wanted to build something, we pretty much ever let it be just thirty percent less.
Up to thirty percent of. Of.
We had a third set.
That would be additional.
Are we talking about, about specifically for subdivision?
Yes. No, we're not figuring out how.
We're not thinking.
For. Setback, for setbacks.
Or sheds or whatever.
Yeah, anything.
Yeah.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent typically we would not have people were turned away.
Within. Something.
So we shrunk our setbacks and then decided we wanted to do away with.
The thirty.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Because we just said we were giving it to everybody anyways, why don't we just make that the rule, so it's black and white, so that somebody doesn't come in and say, well, I wanted it and I didn't get it, but eat it.
That, yeah, that must be a waiver, which is different, but it's like the.
Yeah, thirty percent, yes.
Right, so you have the ability to create your own waivers standards, but the variance is what's required by statute and there's very specific standards and it varies.
Right. Not creating the need for variance is part of the reasons to not get a variance.
Yeah.
But putting a foundation in without a permit that doesn't meet the variance is creating your own.
Right.
Part of this, exactly.
Exactly, and so my thoughts, when I, when I saw that, was the other development off of Route seven that, that teams are doing.
So.
With the guy that came in and said, well, his driveway is too close to my garden, it's like, well, your garden is too damn close to his driveway because that's his land. And so I just see that when we do this, you set it up for, like, it's the same with this, you're not having a problem now, it's two free owners down the road. When people come back and they say.
You guys can.
This is, you know, here, there, it's like the whole.
It's a.
I need to go.
It's. So. That's just my thought, I think we should.
All are in front of a meeting now.
They've got. Next meeting to set up a time to meet everybody and.
Right, thanks.
Alright, uh, everyone.
We know. I really.
It's crazy.
I think now.
We need a motion to adjourn over y'all.
I, I'm not, there are no laws here.
You can have three people who adjourn it, right?
Yeah.
You guys have a quorum, we don't need to adjourn.
But we don't have anything else.
Well, Ben's leaving too.
Big, big public.
You don't need them, you're the certain person.
Well. I assume you guys are.
People can ask us.
I mean, you're not where I was.
Do you know you're still here?
So I'll.